You didn't remember doing that.
It's now six P M on Thursday, June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four, and I call this meeting of the Bailey Plan and Commission Order. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hankins.
Present.
Mr. Jacobson.
Present.
Mr. Sims. Ms. Taylor Jones. Mr. Arnie.
Present.
Mr. Ackley.
Here.
Mr. Lassenberg.
Present.
Mr. Bennett.
Here.
Mr. Perrin.
Okay, this meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, a copy which can be found in the back vestibule of this hearing room. At this time, I would just ask all commissioners, audience members, to please silence or turn off your cell phones, other devices that would disrupt the proceedings, so just take a second, check that, please. Next, I would entertain a motion to revise or approve the planning commission's meeting minutes for the April twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four regular meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the April twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four regular meeting minutes as presented.
Second by Hankins.
Okay, motion by Jacobson, second by Hankins, please vote.
If it's not coming up, you may need to refresh your screen.
And that would be. There we go, thank you.
I voted yes, Mr. Ackley abstained, motion carried.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to accept in a record all staff reports, attachments, memos, and handouts regarding each application. Staff, any updates or additions?
No.
Motion to approve the package as presented.
Second.
Everybody have a motion and a second?
Who's second? Mr. Lass, okay. Mr. Jacobson and Mr. Their votes have not come through yet, Mr. Arnie and Mr. Jacobson?
The force is slow.
I've got that same circle going around.
Did you get mine?
All voted yes, motion carried.
Alright, next, we have our consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda this evening. Bear with me, I need to read through all three of these. Item two A is a request to final plat lots one through one thirteen and outlots A through E. Cornhusker Creek being a plating of tax lot thirty A located in the southeast quarter of section twenty. Township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Applicant Cornhusker Creek LLC Development, general location, South Thirty Sixth and Cornhusker Road. Case number S two four zero four dash zero six. Second item is two B, request to rezone lots one and two Waldorf replat number seven from R D sixty P S. And R S eighty four P S to R D sixty P S and R S eighty four P S. For the purpose of a lot line adjustment and small subdivision plat lots one and two Waldorf replat seven. Applicant Lawrence T. Butler, general location, five oh five Waldorf Drive. Case numbers Z dash two four zero four dash zero two and S dash two four zero four dash zero five. Excuse me, and the third item is two C, a request to rezone lots one and two Walnut Grove Estates replat one. Being a replat of lot two Walnut Grove Estates from A G to R E for the purpose of single family residential development. Small subdivision plat lots one and two Walnut Grove Estates replat one. And a waiver of section six dash four of the subdivision regulations regarding street design standards. Applicant Eric Carlson, general location, five zero zero seven Plattview Road. Case number Z dash two three zero three dash zero eight and S dash two three zero three dash zero four. Commissioners wishes, anybody want to remove that consent agenda? If not, we'll make one motion to approve all three.
I guess that's the audience of theirs.
Is there anybody that was hoping to speak on either of those items, any of those items tonight? I don't see any.
If it, please, Chair, seeing no request to move them off the consent agenda, I'd like to make a motion to approve item two A, two B, and two C as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ackley, or sorry, motion by Jacobson, second by Ackley, please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Okay, these items will go to City Council for public hearing on August sixth, so if you're here for those, be back on August sixth for City Council. Alright, next, we'll go to our public hearings. We have three items for public hearing this evening. For each, I will announce the case and then ask there's any updates from the Plowing Department. After that, the applicant will have the opportunity to present their request. After the applicant has been heard, the public will be allowed to provide any testimony they would like to be considered on the record. Those testifying should come forward to the podium, state their name, and spell their name and sign in for the record. Testimony will be limited to three minutes. I reserve the right to shorten that time if we have a large number, which I think will be good tonight. After the testimony is taken, the applicant shall have the opportunity for rebuttal, after which we will close the public hearing. Again, here at the Plowing Commission, our golden rule is just treat others as you like to be treated when you're speaking. So our first public hearing is item three A, a request to rezone lot eleven Child's Estates Acres. From R D sixty to R G twenty eight for the purpose of multifamily residential development. The applicant is the Bellevue Housing Authority, general location, eight three zero one South Ninth Street. Case number Z two four zero four dash zero three. Staff, any updates?
No updates. I'll go ahead and give a brief summary if the applicant wants to come up front and get signed in and ready to speak, please. This request is for a rezoning for property for Bellevue Housing Authority. At the corner of the intersection of South Ninth Street and Child's Road West. The property is currently zoned R D sixty and allows for duplex residential. The applicant is requesting a zoning of R G twenty eight, which would increase the density a bit for that area. So the north is the new newer Forest Elementary, Forest Station Elementary School, O P S. That zoning has an R G eight, so it has a very high density residential zoning. This property is also bordered by some light industrial zoning, as well as some commercial zoning, and also borders the railroad tracks. As such, staff is recommending approval of this request. It does meet the comprehensive plan for medium density residential. As defined by the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan, and also based on its location and the adjacent neighborhood zonings. Staff believes that this request is in line with those items, and with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Hi, Tammy, thank you. I'm Greg Eckel with Banyan Homes. My name's spelled E C K E L. I'm representing the Bellevue Housing Authority tonight. Tammy's said it very eloquently what we're asking for, and that's just a little bit higher density there, so we can hopefully provide a little bit more affordable housing for our community. As we all know, we need it, and so anyway, that's what we're asking for. We're hoping to do a few more units there. We did the, the two duplexes to the south about nine years for Bellevue Housing. And we looked at doing the same type of thing, but we thought that this would allow us to do a few more units and hopefully achieve a little more of that, that goal. And so, is there any questions or anything for me?
We'll open the public hearing, and then if there's any questions, we'll bring it back up at the end.
Perfect.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, the time for public testimony. Is there anyone who cares to provide public testimony on this matter, whether in favor or in opposition? Please come forward, state your name, and you have an opportunity for us to hear you.
I might both sign in?
Yes, please.
Okay. Give me a second there.
No problem.
Okay, my name's Art Childers. I live right across the street from this lot. Actually, the second house from your planner right there, yeah, eighty-three ten South Ninth. I was here before on the planning for the two duplexes. I was there for another planning before they decided with the duplexes. And I tell you what, that lot doesn't have the room for a multi. Anything else other than them duplexes, because the edge of that back duplex is a sharp drive right to the railroad tracks. Okay, on the Child's roadside, another very sharp down that the city or the housing district ever cleaned or kept, kept cleaning, so. I oppose multi, anything bigger than what they had planned for duplexes. Okay, and because, like I say, you can't use the school for anything, that's Omaha. Any kids come in there, still have to go to Bellevue. And so, there's a, right now, we have kids in the first two units, in the front, in the back. And I tell you what, them kids only got a little front yard to play with, and it's quite steep, and they're next to the road. So, anything bigger or higher or more people is not gonna work there. So I oppose for the plan.
Okay, thank you. Come on up.
My name's Dustin Brechner, and I'm the one that lives directly across from this. And I just wanted to oppose it as well for most of the stuff Art actually touched on already. And another thing, the trees that are there are actually pretty beneficial with the sound with the railroad tracks there. And I just don't see the space of having more, including parking. I don't, if you build more units there, you'd need more parking and there's no street parking, because the street's already smaller too. So, I did. We're already losing, with the school being built, we already lost all the trees that blocked any sound from the tracks from that way. And I know years back, it was talked about turning that into a quiet zone, so they don't actually use the horn on the trains, but that never went through, so. The trees kind of have to help as a natural barrier there. But I just don't see the space being able to hold more units there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else for item three A?
Alright, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. The applicant would like to come back up and address any of those comments that were made, or any questions staff has?
Greg Eckel again, two one oh six Crest Ridge Drive. The, the building that we're trying to propose here is gonna be more in a townhome style fashion. It's also gonna have garages in it, and so they're all gonna have one car stall garages, is what we're figuring. We're trying to, to do six units, so we're only going to six or seven, the seventh unit is maybe a handicap accessible unit, which would be a single story unit. The space that we're gonna be taking, we're not gonna be taking any of the trees on the backside of that lot where the railroad is. So, all of the, all of the property will be on the flat spot up on top before you hit that crest. We'll use, we'll barely go into that little crest of that hill there. And so, the space that we're talking about, the building will fit, and we'll work with planning and building to make sure that, you know, what we're building there is, is good. But the building we're proposing is, it's one building versus several buildings, and so. Another thing we've talked about is putting a place space in the backyard there for the kids, you know, so they can have gym set or whatever it might be. And so, we'll work with the county, or I mean, work with the city to, you know, get those kind of things done, so. We're trying not to overdo this, but with the cost of construction right now, it's through the roof, as everybody knows. And so, to get more high density out of one piece of land, that's what we're trying to achieve. Hopefully, we can build a building that's gonna be beneficial for not only the people living there, but hopefully make it aesthetically pleasing for you guys, you know? And I know, anything I say up here is probably, they're not gonna like, but that's, you know, that, that is the way it is, but I will work with you guys, trust me. Anyways, that's all I kind of have to say about that. Any questions or?
Yeah, Commissioners, I'll open up, anybody questions, thoughts?
I have a question.
Goodness, chair, tell me. In, in your packet in your application, you mentioned that this is compatible with our Fort Crook Road Plan.
Correct.
You actually used the words mixed use application. This is, and the zoning seems to favor just residential. You're not planning any commercial activities on this lot.
No, it's not mixed use. If we said that, it was probably a miss, miss spoken.
Well, and, and it might be how I just happened to read it, the, the Fort Crook Plan is pretty general in terms of wanting mixed use and pedestrian plan, planning type of application, so I just wanted to get that clarification out of the way.
Yeah, this is gonna be strictly residential, strictly residential, and so, and it's gonna be also market rate housing. So, you know, affordable, but it's gonna have working class people in there, you know, this is not, this is not section eight type housing, and so.
Thank you. This leads me to a question for staff, is that this location is particularly favorable. There's a school there, so that, Leinster Residential. It's also in the Fort Crook Road Plan located right next to a rapid transit, proposed rapid transit station. And regardless of how the, the area evolves, eventually, the rapid transit station is going to stay there. The applicant makes mention of pedestrian oriented development as well. Eyes, in zooming out and looking at this, what's our thinking as we approve this zoning to allow pedestrians to get across the street to the restaurants that were located in the application a mile away? It, it looks challenging even without development, but I'm looking for some input on what, what the thinking is to comply with pedestrian friendly.
Sure. Currently, the city of Bellevue is working with MAPPA and Metro right now to move the Fort Crook Road twenty forty plan forward. And to look at feasibility of things like the B R T and those connections. So, I don't have a good answer for you tonight, but I can tell you that that is being worked on right now. And partially through that study that has been kicked off and is ongoing, so with the railroad tracks, those aren't going anywhere. So, development is going to have to, that's, that's one of the obstacles that is, one of the obvious obstacles that is there. And that was a conversation that the city had at length when the school went in there. Like I said, those aren't going anywhere, so we're gonna have to move forward and, and deal with that type of urban environment. So, again, that's something that's currently being looked at. Eventually, you know, you will see those intersections improved as the Fort, Fort Crook Road Plan moves forward. At such time when those intersections are improved, is when you will see more of that connectivity and more of that pedestrian friendly attributes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, one of the things with the Fort Crook Plan, I'm always concerned about is how we, we do the integration from, from your specific zoning change request to move forward, how it fits into the entire area. Right. And so, that's kind of the basis of my question, that's why I'm asking about it.
Yeah, and we're very well aware of the Fort Crook Plan, and that's what we're trying to do. We're, we're someone, trying to do some of the first buildings here that have been done for a long time. And so, hopefully, we can do some residential, we'll be doing some of the mixed use on Fort Crook eventually, you know, and so. We're trying to, to make improvements here, you know, I've lived in Bellevue since nineteen sixty-eight. I've seen south roads go from south roads to what it is now, you know, and so, anyway, it's a, it's a changed Fort Crook Road from when I was a kid.
Thank you, I'm appreciative of your elaboration on it.
You're welcome.
Question for staff, what are the sidewalk requirements for an R G twenty eight, this project?
Sidewalk actually has nothing to do with zoning. At such time, a building permit would be approved. Sidewalk is required unless it's waived by Public Works Director and or City Council.
Thank you.
Mr. Hankins, I'll give you a little insight on that. If you look across the street, we had a, probably our debate, I think Mr. Jacobson and Mr. Ackley and I were on the, on the, on this commission at that time about that sidewalk that the school put in. And we specifically, they were very adamant about not going to the, you know, to the east. If you see where their sidewalk comes out, they're kind of forcing all the trap, all the kids to go to the intersection across that way, so it was very, a lot of conversation about where do you go and how do you get across the tracks and all of that, and so. I would think some of the same, same conversations would happen on, in this area too, but that was a lot of conversation about not going that, not going to the east, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Question, I guess, for Mr. Eckel, again, I appreciate, we're just looking at zoning tonight, but it would help to visualize the site plan in some respects. So on the south side of this lot, you've got two duplexes, so you got four units, right?
I have a very rough drawing, if you'd like to see it.
Well, bear with me.
Okay, I will.
So if we just flip that to the north side, essentially, you're putting another duplex between those two, so you'll have all party walls or something.
Basically, yes, that is correct.
And then adding a seventh on to another end, or these things are?
They're, they're, we're, these are all preliminary things, until we get to building, you know, and see what plan, planning says, building says. Right now, what we're kind of anticipating is six three bedroom units, two stories, garage, come in, stairs up, up. foyer, kitchen, living room, right? Upstairs, go up, three bedrooms, small laundry room, and closets for each of the bedrooms. And so, that's one of the units. The end unit would be possibly like a two bedroom, single story, handicap accessible. All these will have driveways, and they'll all have, except for the end unit, will have garages. And so, that will take care of a lot of the parking issues that, that I'm sure they have, and so.
I guess, Ms. Palm, just for scale, I know downtown here, the new apartments went in next to, I don't know if they're apartments or condos by Washington Park.
Right.
I don't remember how deep those are, is that four or five deep? I'm trying to just visualize.
I don't remember off the top of my head how deep those are either, the width of those.
Three story though.
But those, those are also three story.
So again, during permitting process, that's when you finalize, how many units can you actually get on here for parking requirements and square footage and?
Correct. At the end of the day, if this is approved, the applicant's gonna have to, you know, have the property, you know, work with an architect, engineer to determine what will fit, because again, you're gonna have landscaping requirements, you're gonna have design standards with a building of that size. You're gonna have to work, and you're gonna have to meet parking counts, so. All that would have to be determined at time of building permit, but yes, all those regulations would have to be met.
I guess, question for the neighbors, Mr. Childers, Mr. Brechner. I think you both mentioned that, you know, there's no room for more than two duplexes. I want to make sure I understand. Did you mean the two that are there, or no more than two more duplexes on the north side? In other words, what, what was your anticipation or what was your understanding?
What we were told, and when, when this first came out, that there would just be two more duplexes, almost exactly the same, the ones like they have there now. If you notice the back one, at their back door, it drops off. So you lose a hundred feet of just about from that banking on that lot. I think the, it says like three hundred and some feet. Well, I imagine it's about two twenty-five, two fifty, actually, because you can't use that bank, it right down to the tracks. And crowding in, I mean, you're gonna have something here too. None of us are, are two story houses. One is a partial two, it's more of an attic, but, but most of them are, are just, you know, one story houses and stuff, and now we're gonna put multi-story units in there. I think it'd be out of place. We thought them were out of place, and they kind of are compared to the old houses that we have there. I was born in one of the houses down there. My grandfather owned all that land on the, on that, on the west side at one time or another. So, I've been there for seventy years. So, I could say, and like, and the school, that's a joke. I mean, that road on Child's Road is twenty-two feet wide. That's not even standard. I believe your standard is twenty-four? I, because I used to work for the railroad, I put in railroad crossings and, and all the signaling and stuff, and that's what our standards was. And you don't even have standard there. When they put the school in, they promised no school buses. They're gonna go cross out, they're gonna go up around Child's Road. That's a joke. It happens. It happens now, so. And I could say, we got kids, the only place they can play, they like to say, the two duplexes got kids, what do they do? They go across this Child's Road to go over to the school to play. And that's a bad thing. Just had a wreck there last, yesterday. So.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Childers. Well, I guess from my perspective, again, affordable housing is obviously an issue nationally, it's an issue locally. I think it remains to be seen how many units you end up with here, and to your point, Ms. Palm, there's gonna have to be setback requirements, green space requirements. Mr. Eckel, you might meet with the neighbors after this portion of the meeting ends, just to maybe show them that napkin site plan you've got going, because I don't know if it's L-shaped, or it's all just a block on that other side, but again, it's, tonight, it's just a rezoning matter, and basically, Tammy, we're saying it can go more than the current duplex zoning and have more than four total units, right? If it fits all other requirements.
Correct.
Yeah. I guess with that said, unless there's any other questions or comments, I'd make a motion to approve of the application based upon conformance with zoning ordinance, the Fort Crook Road twenty forty plan, as well as the lack of perceived negative impact on surrounding area, provided, of course, it's gonna fulfill all the other as well as the lack of perceived negative impact on surrounding area, provided, of course, it's gonna fulfill all the other requirements of the zoning regulations with setbacks and other.
Second.
Okay, we have motion by Athalie, second by Lassenberg. Did I say that right? I always say that right, don't I?
Lassenberg.
Lassenberg, okay. Um, please vote.
Five voted yes, Mr. Lassenberg voted no. Motion carried.
Okay, that will go, uh, in front of the City Council for public hearing on August sixth. So you have a chance to come back and talk to the City Council, okay? All right. Our second public hearing tonight is item three B. A request to rezone Lot twenty-nine D's addition to South Omaha from RS eighty-four to RG twenty for the purpose of multifamily residential development. Applicant is the Housing Foundation of Sarpy County. General location, two seven one three Edward Street, case number Z dash two four zero four dash zero four. Staff, any updates?
No updates. Um, I'll go ahead and give a brief summary if the applicant wants to come up once again, um, and get signed in at the podium. Uh, again, this is, uh, the applicant is Housing Foundation for Sarpy County. Uh, currently, this is a lot, um, that is zoned RS eighty-four. They are requesting it go to RG twenty to allow for some additional density on the property. Based upon just strictly square footage of the lot, not taking into consideration green space, parking, any of that, but just based on square footage, a maximum of four units would be supported on this lot with the proposed density. Um, just based on the size, the square footage of the lot alone. One thing to point out, we're not talking site plan this evening, but the applicant is aware, and anyone who builds on this lot will not have direct access to Fort Creek Road. That access will have to come off of Edward Street. Um, Fort Creek Road will not be allowed. Property is designated for medium-density resi- residential use in the Fort Creek Road Plan. The proposed zoning, um, does conform with the future land use map. Um, this zoning is defined as medium-density residential. Also, in regards to the Fort Creek Road Plan, it does line up with the Fort Creek Road 2040 Plan, which calls for additional density and, um, calls for more of a mixed-use type of corridor that mixes, uh, service, business types along with higher-density residential. So for those reasons, staff is recommending approval of this request.
Okay, applicant, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, again, Greg Eckle, uh, two one oh six Preston's Drive, Capillion. Um, basically the same issues as we were talking about just a minute ago. And so we still would like to do a little bit higher density there. We haven't come up with, uh, plans or anything like that or so, but we would like to be able to provide a little bit more housing on that lot. And so we're working with Bruce Yoder right now on on plans. But as far as the zoning goes, we're hoping we can get a couple more units there than what's allowed currently.
Okay, same thing, we'll let the public.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, so I'll open up the public hearing. Again, this is, uh, public testimony for item three B. Uh, if anyone cares to testify, whether in favor or opposition, please come forward, state your name, and, uh, let us know what you're thinking.
Sir, can you, sir, can you sign in and and then state your name and record for the address? Thank you.
Sorry.
You're okay.
This is all new to me. I'm, uh, Robert Lawrence. Yeah, that lot, it's not even an acre of land, and you want to put, I don't know, four, six units down there? And then all the traffic's gonna be on Edward Street. You can't, you know, they can't access it from Fort Creek Road, so, uh, I just don't see it happening. Uh, I've lived there for thirty-seven years or thirty-eight years. And I really propose, you know, don't want this to be in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Is it, um, is it twenty-seven oh seven Edwards, is that your address?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just so we have it for the record, all right, thank you.
How you doing? My name's Bill Conapek, I live at twenty-seven oh one Edward Street, which is three lots to the east. When they have fireworks, when they have fireworks up, where that little spot is next to your circle and the red, red deal to the left a little bit, right down, come back down where that spot is, right there. They put up fireworks stand, you can't see, if you want to cross thirteenth, you can't see to get down on thirteenth, cause you can't see far enough down the road to see what's going on. And if they're gonna put those buildings there, and mo- and me, the two other guys that are here with me are the only people that are in our fifties. The rest of everybody is retired, older people. You put anything on that house, uh, uh, other than just a house, we're gonna have accidents, people are gonna get killed. Um, that street, right now, the car lot runs, people run up and down that, up and down that street, cause that's their test drive. They go around the corners and rip up the street. Further up the street, we have younger kids. Where are they gonna go if they have to go out onto Edward Street? Because if you go right, you gotta go up to the Boulevard. And again, that corner right there is extremely narrow. If somebody's parked on the curb, you can't get two cars next to each other going around that corner. And Rob and a couple of these people that are gonna talk keep telling me about how, when the trailer court was there and how people were peeing in the backyard and everything else, and I get it, brand-new, brand-new apartments or brand-new whatever you're gonna put there. Those people don't care, it's not theirs. I I lived in Omaha where I had an apartment complex across the street from me. I had one at the bottom of the street. I spent more time picking up trash in my front yard from them, throwing it out the window. I'm not saying it's the people moving in there, I'm saying it's people that come and go, it's not theirs. My property's mine, same thing with these guys, everybody there. I didn't move into an apartment, I moved into a neighborhood. And I don't, I don't think it's right, I mean, put a house there, that'd be cool, you know? And anybody, I have the Yes House across the street from me. I moved out of Omaha, North Omaha, I got North Omaha down in Bellevue and calling the cops constantly because baby mama's husband or boyfriend or whatever the case be will be over there. I don't think it fits there and I don't think, you know, any of us want it. We we have a nice neighborhood, a bunch of retired people. You know, it works good for all of us. Thank you very much.
Good evening, uh, I'm Don Fiala. Uh, I own and, uh, some, sometimes reside at twenty-seven oh nine Edward Street, which is the first house east of the property in question. Owned and lived there for about sixty years. The property is a little deceiving. There's not as much ground there that's usable as you would get or, uh, comprehend by just measuring the square footage. It's a dangerous corner. The other gentleman that, uh, brought up the, uh, turning hazard there or the the entrance onto thirteenth street is exactly correct. Uh, if there's a building there and it's not done exactly correctly, and even then it may not, it's going to be a, uh, a hazard. And we have had fatalities there in the past, probably will in the future. This will only exacerbate that, I believe. There are no sidewalks either on Edward Street or on Highway seventy-five, there have, or, excuse me, South Thirteenth Street, there there had, never have been. I don't look to to believe that there probably ever will be. Any children that, uh, might be associated with four houses there or four dwellings or however they plan to do this, would probably not have enough room in the yard for, uh, anything really. So those kids are gonna be on foot somewhere, if there are children involved. Another issue, uh, there's no schools on that side. As the gentleman in question was saying, uh, he said a small increase, it, to me, it's a three-hundred percent increase from what it is now, uh, one family dwelling to three or four, four or five, six, I don't know. That's at least three-hundred percent. I don't believe it'll support it, I believe it's dangerous. I have no objection to a single-family dwelling there, but I do object, uh, strenuously to a, a, a multifamily. And I I do feel that, uh, as a former Bellevue police officer, I feel that, uh, there's some danger there, uh, with that entering traffic on South Thirteenth Street. So I hope you'll consider, uh, the reasons that I've I've, uh, brought here. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
My name is Linda Simba, and I live at twenty-seven zero six Edward Street. And I just want to reiterate what the previous speakers have just said. It is a dangerous corner, and if you put, uh, a multifamily dwelling there, I don't believe it supports that type of, uh, structure. And if you have children there, thirteenth street going into Fort, uh, Fort Creek Road is very busy. And there's a lot of traffic already, you know, especially rush hour and, you know, uh, any time of the day, actually, there's a lot of traffic. And, um, I think it's just going to be dangerous, and it is, like I said, uh, a well-established neighborhood with older residents. And having a multifamily dwelling there is just going to kind of, the aesthetic of the whole neighborhood is gonna be, you know, changed. And, um, I just don't think that that corner should be for a multifamily dwelling. And, uh, I hope you take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Good.
Hi, my name is Lee Suter, uh, I live twenty-seven oh four Edward Street. That corner where you guys want to build this apartment, it's just, that street's so busy. And any kid can get smacked, run over by a car. Why don't you guys take the old Swenson pool you guys ripped out up the street and put your apartment in there? You know, you got, got neighborhoods, you got an old tennis court there, you could rip down and make a big playground, be perfect for the kids. Not on the corner where all these cars, they don't give a crap about you. They fly so fast on seventy-five. I just think it's a bad deal. It's hard, hard in the wintertime, the s- the snow, the snow department, I mean, they keep it clean, but I'm from North Omaha and they, I moved over here in the eighties and then they kept solid on the streets in Omaha, not even in Bellevue. You know, I just think it's a bad idea having an apartment down there. That's all I got to say, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Barbara Todd, I'm one of the older residents they were talking about. I also do not think that we need townhouses down there or apartment buildings down there. Once upon a time, I took my life in my hands, cause I had to walk four blocks, no sidewalks. Cars coming at you, don't care, they're not slowing down, there's no place for them to get over, there's no place for old ladies to get over. The streets are narrow down there, and trying to get out of there from an apartment, I don't see how it's gonna work. So think carefully about the older people, all right? Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. The applicant like to come up and address any of the concerns?
Hi, uh, Carolyn Postusel, I'm with Housing Foundation for Sarpy County. And... Um, my home address is twelve oh seven Casper Street, address for our office is eighty-two fourteen Armstrong Circle. Um, what we're proposing here, even though the density says apartment built, uh, multifamily, what we're talking about is more along the lines of a fourplex. Uh, well, it qualifies as multifamily. Uh, we are talking two stories at the top, um, a lot of this depends upon where we're at. When you look at the, where it would fit with the neighborhood, the rooftops are gonna be pretty even with next door. Uh, and the fact that next door sits up a little bit higher. Uh, so there won't be that much of a change as far as what the distance is for the building itself. Uh, the lot right now is kind of deceiving in the fact that it's got the concrete drive through it, um, that comes off, that cuts off that corner. The lot is actually the entire piece, um, not just, not just the part with, that's to the east of that parcel. We're aware that there needs to be a set aside on both, on both the west and the north, or the west and the north, uh, so that will be quite as different. Um, and we're not looking to do anything large, as far as family being in there and children, uh, this will mostly be one and studio apartments. So we do have to rework it a little bit from what we had, uh, but at right, at this time, that's what we expect it to be, is one-bedrooms and studios. So it won't be anything, um, that's, that's increased adults or the, I doubt there'll be any children in the unit. I appreciate the chance to meet the neighbors and I'd love to talk to you about what we're gonna do. Um, we know that this is the first thing that you see when you pull into Bellevue. Um, so when you're coming down north, you see, you see the older homes, which are an amazing part of the neighborhood, we want to keep with that aesthetic. Um, and then we want to make sure that what people see when they're coming in on that, on that lot, isn't just an open, empty lot with a fireworks stand or whatever else has been out there at different times. Um, but we want to make sure that what's there is, is a positive thing for the city.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions, thoughts?
If I may point something out real quick. Using the GIS data that Ms. Curry has on the screen, just want to point out, um, kind of the site triangle that is over there currently. So for reference, where that property line is along Fort Creek Road, it sits back thirty-two feet back a curb. So the property line doesn't even start until thirty-two feet back a curb. Um, with the setback that would be required, you're talking about a building. The closest it could be would be nearly fifty feet back a curb, about forty-seven feet back a curb. Um, and again, you know, not sure how this is going to lay out, but just wanted to provide some numbers for reference along Edward Street. That property line currently sits eighteen feet back a curb. So, again, if that's a front yard, which access have to be off of Edwards. You're talking, a building would be fifty-three feet back a curb, um, when all was said and done. With a building envelope.
Question for staff in terms of, again, the access there, you know, you can see the house on the. North side right next to Fort Crook Road, if we were doing this all over again, you probably wouldn't allow that home with the driveway. That close for stacking and whatnot. I guess with multifamily, is it? Generally, the theory that we put the driveway access to Edward Street farther on the east side, which means the building would need to be. Pushed farther to the west side, just in terms of, again, trying to get that access and stacking further back?
Yes, there's, that's something Public Works is gonna have to look at, again, if this is approved and they come in for a building permit, that's gonna have to be reviewed, but you're correct, currently. There are um design guidelines as far as spacing for driveways and how close they can be to intersections. And Public Works would also look at alignment of the current driveways in the area. Taking into consideration what is adjacent and what's also to the north.
Not necessarily required to match them, but just.
I I'm not sure what our engineers would do in that scenario. But there's definitely spacing, um, how far you, you know, how far, how close you can be to adjacent driveways and how far back you have to be from an intersection.
I had a couple of questions for staff if uh Mr. Ackley is uh. If I may, uh, two questions for staff, I noticed in the uh documentation, the Public Works uh recommended that a uh. Sidewalk uh. Easement or. Losing the world would have to be. Waiver would have to be requested. The change from zoning to our G twenty doesn't change the approval or no approval of whether or not that would be approved or not.
Correct, it's re- it's required as part of building permit unless a waiver is requested and granted.
Uh, the same would be true for parking along that street as well. That with a little bit higher density, there might be a tendency towards on-street parking and that all would all take place, Public Works made no comment with the change in zoning. So they would consider that later on in the process.
Are you saying whether required parking would be allowed on street? Typically, we don't allow that, it has to be on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Question for staff, so today, somebody could come in and put a duplex on this lot, correct? Or only a si- only a single family, we've heard a lot about single family, but what what does zoning allow?
Apparently, it would only allow a single-family residence.
I guess Ms. Palm, looking to the future, we've talked about, again, trying to. Assist with affordable housing and some of the infill in the lots, maybe allowing duplexes and single residential, because again, currently we typically deny. Duplex applications when it's surrounded by. Single home residential. In terms of spot zoning, if it's all single around it. I think we had one of those over by.
I would point out, though, this is an all-residential around it, it abuts light industrial to the south. So this is a little bit different because it abuts light industrial to the south and then you've got commercial across the street.
And correct me if I'm wrong, the car dealership or the shop is just to the south on this lot, right, or south of the lot, I should say, correct?
Correct.
So that, there's your industrial, okay.
I think this would, you know, it'd be a different scenario perhaps if it was deeper into the neighborhood and surrounded completely by single family, but. I guess staff looked at this as it actually provides somewhat of a buffer zoning because you have the industrial, you have the heavy commercial. That is already abutting the neighborhood.
And from a parking perspective, again, based on the applicant, if it's gonna be. Either studios or one-bedroom apartments, how do you address parking? Because you assume so many bodies per unit and then multiply that by cars, right?
Correct, to be based on the number of dwelling units.
So if there were three units, you'd have six parking spaces, probably assuming a couple.
Garage count, garages count toward that overall count.
What other items come before the, for public hearings, if this gets properly zoned, do the neighbors have any chance going forward? This is pretty much it for public hearings, isn't it, after that, it's within the zoning, if they bring you a site plan that fits, you're not doing site plan approval publicly?
Correct. At that point, it would be through the building permit process with um landscaping requirements, parking requirements, any design standard requirements. Building code requirements.
Yeah, for myself, this one just feels slightly different because you got single residential all over the place there, and again, I appreciate. Industrial on the south side, but it's kind of a long, narrow, empty. Area, you compare that to the previous. Application we just had where you got school across the street, railroad tracks and a fairly significant apartment went in next to the. School on the previous application. Ms. Posposil, if ultimately you did a duplex and had two bedrooms in each side instead of. A multiplex with four different units. You come out, out the same. If you did a duplex with two bedroom units on each side instead of a fourplex?
If we do two bedrooms, you're talking about the more of the capacity for children to be in there. So I don't know about that, um. I would honestly have to look at numbers and what we can make density-wise work for cost. But another, a duplex is is possibly doable, I'd have to. I haven't done any quotes for um building costs for duplexes recently, so I can't answer that.
Thank you.
Well, if the chair please is hearing silence to move things forward, I'm prepared to make a motion. I'll make a motion to request to rezone Lot twenty-nine D's addition South Omaha from RS eighty-four to RG twenty. For the purpose of a multifamily residential. Uh, development based on approval of conformance to the uh zoning ordinance or Fort Crook uh twenty forty plan, which I might add. Kind of points us to higher density, as well as lack of perceived negative impacts surrounding the area.
Alright, motion made by Jacobson, second by Hankins.
Hankins, Jacobson. Arnie and Ackley voted yes, Lassenberg and Bennett voted no. Motion carried.
Okay, so that, uh, yeah, we're just recommending body, right, we recommended it city council for approval. Um, if you guys have another opportunity to talk to them, August sixth, so it'll be public hearing in the same room, August sixth, in front of the city council, they're the ones that'll actually. You know, take the official vote, whether that moves forward or not, so. Okay, thank you, guys. Alright, next is uh our third public hearing of the evening, item three C. Request for site plan approval for Lot One, Trigarin Town Center Replat Seven. For the purpose of a McDonald's restaurant, applicant McDonald's USA LLC. General location, two-three-zero-six Town Center Drive. Case number Z dash two-four-zero-five dash zero-five. Staff, any updates?
Sorry, no updates, um, if the applicant wants to go ahead and come forward and sign in, I'll just give a brief overview, Mrs. Curry. The uh site plan on the overhead, so this area is roughly Twenty-Fifth and Cape Heart, um. The area is partially developed with a mix of strip retail, um, retail, a few small restaurants. Things of that nature, convenience store. Um, the overall plating and zoning was done twenty-plus years ago in this area. Um, this does have an overlay which requires site plan approval, what the applicant is desiring to do is a new McDonald's restaurant. The site plan has been reviewed by staff, our engineers have reviewed it, um, the applicant did their due diligence with um. City staff in the pre-application process, what is in front of you represents. Um, conformance with our parking requirements, with our code requirements. And our engineers um have reviewed it for um layout, drainage, things of that nature. Obviously, this is a high-traffic area, um. Will this add traffic? Absolutely, but this is a commercially zoned area and it was always anticipated that there would be traffic through here. Um. At the end of the day, I, you know, there may be concerns about Town Center Drive, South Twenty-Fifth Street. Rush hour, you may not be able to turn across traffic, yes, that may be, that may happen as this area continues to develop, but. Um, again, this is in conformance with um. All of our comprehensive plans and, you know, the overall vision for the area, so uh. Staff would welcome the additional development in this area and is recommending approval.
Thank you, Tammy, Joel Jackson, Bishop Engineering. Uh, I'm the civil engineer on the project, representing uh McDonald's Corporation, they're located out of town and they could not be able to be attending tonight. Um, I think you did a very good job summarizing the project, um, it's a. McDonald's newer model store, it's a smaller store, knowing that the majority of McDonald's traffic is drive-through traffic. It's only has thirty-two seats in it, um, we have lots of stacking for um the drive-through itself. Um, in regards to the traffic comment, um, one of the things that McDonald's sees a lot is when they have surrounding businesses like. For example, the Walmart neighborhood market that's close by, a lot of the, the people that are already attending and going to the big. The Walmart that's close by would actually go to the McDonald's um as well, and so. You know, a certain percentage of the traffic is just duplicate traffic, and so it's not generating quite as much as. Um, some other types of businesses would, since there is a lot of crossover customers. But um, there is underground detention located in the southeast corner of the site, and as far as all the staff comments. We have no issue with any of them and are in agreement, and I can answer any questions that you guys may have, thank you.
Okay, I do have to open the public hearing, so give me one second to do that, okay? Yep, I'll open the public hearing, um, if there's anybody that wants to testify on this matter, either for or against, please come forward. Not seeing anybody in the room, we may go ahead and close the public hearing, so um commissioners, comments, thoughts?
I may want a quick clarification from you. Uh, in looking at the drawings, which we see as a PDF. On the uh street side of the uh proposed uh site, uh, is there a sidewalk shown there? I couldn't tell from the drawings, I was assuming there was on the street side.
Yes, there, well, there's two street sides, so, yes, there, there is a long to Town Center Drive and then. What you see to the north represents a sidewalk connection to the Cape Heart Road sidewalk, so that the site will be accessible from Cape Heart Road Trail as well.
Which from a compute, complete street point of view is is a plus to allow walkable traffic to come off the sidewalk instead of entering in the. The commercial area, so that's, that's a plus as well, thanks. If I may, uh, one additional question about sidewalks for staff, and this is more of a complete streets uh point of view on how to integrate this proposal into the area. Is the uh, if we were to zoom out and look at uh Twenty-Fifth Street. Not too far from uh Leewood Oaks and the dental area where we just have the, basically a trailhead. Showing along Twenty-Fifth Street, it looks like there's not too much sidewalks there, and I'm a little concerned how. Walkable to McDonald's, which will be a big draw from young people, youth. To get out of Leewood Oaks and uh the other subdivisions that are on the north side of Twenty-Fifth Street, it looks like you can do it from the south side of Twenty-Fifth Street. Through various walkable additions we've had connecting into this area, but I'm not sure how it works. From Leewood Oaks, it didn't look like there was a sidewalk there.
There's, there's sidewalk there. Yeah, there's sidewalk, there's actually new sidewalk there from when they redid the bridge, probably four, five years ago. Uh, Ms. Curry, if you zoom in, can you zoom in for me, please? And then go south. Yeah, there's, there's sidewalk that goes from Linwood all the way up. That's all now connected, you can. Now Mrs. Curry's making us carsick. But yeah, that, that's actually newer sidewalk that was put in when they redid the bridge over Witted Creek. That was one of the perks of having to redo the bridge.
I think Google Maps hasn't caught up with the overflight yet, so, thank you. Thanks.
Question for staff, I've been down here many times, I did not get here before the meeting tonight, are there stop signs on South Twenty-second? Along Town Center Road or is that currently just open?
No, there's stop signs. Yeah, there's stop signs.
So again, the east-west traffic will stop and the folks that are coming.
No, the east-west traffic does not stop, there is a stop sign on South Twenty-second, um.
So should we be considering as part of this, or I don't know if you have to get a traffic study to support it, but that Town Center Drive is. Super busy for, again, trying to get people turning in and out, and as we continue to fill, which again, we have more. Vacant lots here, I think the car wash, is that already open or under construction?
Yeah, Public Works did not require a traffic study for this uh particular application. Um, I presume, you know, they were comfortable with what's being shown in current conditions, but I think you're absolutely right, as this area continues to develop. Um. You know, that may be revisited, but for right, right now, Public Works was comfortable with the existing conditions.
Yeah, I would never foresee a stoplight internally there, but stop signs, it seems like. Are gonna become almost a requirement.
I had a question, I don't know if it's just, you know, you mentioned there's only seating for thirty-two inside. And I count roughly seventy-five parking stalls on site, so I'm just curious, uh, is that a. City of Bellevue, is that, is that one of our regulations that's requiring that, is that a McDonald's standard, seems like a lot of parking stalls for only thirty-two seats inside, and I just wanna make sure it's nothing that. We should be looking at on our city regulations that's requiring that much concrete if it doesn't have to be.
I don't believe there's any city maximum and the city minimum was fairly small, uh, McDonald's tries to aim for, you know. Anywhere from thirty-five to sixty parking stalls on site if they can, depending on the lot size.
Yeah, we only require two and a half stalls per every five seats, so. Yeah, they're, they far exceed our minimum.
Yeah, yes, just, again, when you said thirty-two, I'm like, wow, there's a lot of parking for thirty-two places to sit inside, so I agree with you, the majority of the traffic's driving through. Or, you know, ordering on the app and pulling up and getting it, taking it home, so, okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Well, if there's no further questions or comments, I'd make a motion to approve this application based on conformance with the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan.
Second by Jacobson.
Alright, motion by Ackley, second by Jacobson, please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
And that will be for public hearing with the city council on July sixteenth. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, next we have just a current business comprehensive plan, updates from staff?
Yes, just wanted to provide you all a quick update, um, staff has gotten its first look at the first draft of the comp plan update. Um, we have finished our initial review and uh we'll be turning that over to the consultant tomorrow. We are scheduled on July sixteenth to have a joint city council planning commission meeting. Um, where you folks will get your first look at the document, so, um.
Evening, daytime?
Daytime, you guys, the consultant wanted you folks to see it first before the steering committee and the technical committee, so. Um, you guys are scheduled in the morning. so you guys are scheduled in the morning. I believe we did ten-thirty to eleven-thirty or ten-thirty to twelve? I have to go back and look, I, I believe those emails were sent out, the consultant sent an email out.
Ten to eleven-thirty.
Yep, like I saved the date, so, again, you guys will get a first look. You're not getting it ahead of time, you're getting it that day. Consultants said they like to do that because it elicits more questions and more discussion. So, yes, so I realize it's during the day. Again, we're doing that just because we wanted you all to have the first look at it, so, sorry if that is a little...
Tuesday, Tuesday, July sixteenth, yes.
Tuesday, July sixteen. We will advertise that as a public meeting, we won't take public testimony, but since there'll be quorums, we'll advertise it as a public meeting, so...
Lunch and beer provided, that also generates more comments generally?
This is the last quarter of the fiscal year, so it's kinda slim pickings in the planning department right now.
The other department saved their money till the end, though, we'll hit them up.
Dude, I don't get much money at all.
Alright, yeah, just so if you guys didn't hear, so Tuesday, July sixteen, ten to eleven-thirty. I got an email from the consultant, so you guys check your, check your, check your email, so...
Can you send a calendar invite instead of just, I wonder if that...
Yeah, I'll have them do that. I think how she did it is it was attached, so you had to like click on it to put it on your calendar. It was, it was that extra step.
Three extra buttons.
I think I physically entered it. Which for me, technology-wise, you know how that is.
All those extra thumbs, right? Alright, anything else?
No, that is it.
Alright, then I would entertain a motion for somebody to adjourn us. Seven-ten, motion by Bennett?
Second.
Second by Ackley. Ackley, yes.
We're adjourned, motion carried, we're adjourned.
Did the old man TV show just start at...